Six thirty. Call to order, uh, the board of, the regular scheduled Board of Alderman meeting, uh, roll call please.
Alderman Cox.
Here.
Alderman Hudson.
Present.
Alderman Wilkins.
Present.
Alderman Deckard.
Here.
Alderman Rogers.
Present.
Alderman Bagley.
Yeah.
We have a forum. Will you stand and join me as pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to number four, which is our comments from citizens. Any comments, please, uh, come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Go ahead, John, because I'm going to be a while.
Do citizens communication have a specific, any specific time limit?
You should try to limit them to three to five minutes.
That's right, okay, I just want to know that.
That's three to five minutes.
Sounds good, yeah. Speak beyond that. Uh, good evening, my name is John Martin, I am the Republican candidate for State Representative District forty-four, which includes Centralia, Hallsville, Ashland, East Columbia, or, I'm sorry, yeah, East Columbia and Ashland and down to Hartsburg. And so, uh, Shuri Rice is the current State Representative representing Centralia and, and, you know, East Boone County and South Boone County. I'm running, she is term limited, and so she's not able to run again next year, so I'm running in twenty twenty-four for State Rep. District forty-four. I'm, I'm a Centralia native, I grew up here, I graduated high school here back in nineteen eighty-seven, and my wife is from Hallsville, so we're, we're Boone County natives. Uh, business owner, uh, my company is pro pumping and hydrojetting, and, uh, we do quite a bit of work for the city of Centralia as far as, as far as businesses here. Uh, we provide most of the grease trap pumping for most of the restaurants and then businesses in the Centralia area. Worked with Matt Rush, I've actually worked with Matt Rush today, and the town pump is Sepic, uh, that, that, that spill, and so, uh, you know, you can do a lot of work in, in, in the Centralia area. It's a service company, uh, I've been with this company for sixteen years, I'm the owner, and, uh, my wife and I run the company, nine employees, and so I know about, you know, providing quality work, and, uh, you know, if I don't do quality work, competition comes and, you know, overtakes it, so the importance of strong businesses and, and economic growth, things like that are very, very important, be, providing good quality jobs is, is important. And so, uh, that's my role, I'm also a former pastor, uh, I was involved as a youth minister at Hallsville Baptist, a little bit of time here at Centralia First Baptist for a long time, so I know how to lead people and, and, uh, work with people and then provide leadership in those ways as well. Uh, if elected, I would, you know, uh, you know, I want to, you know, strong working relationship with, with the city, with Centralia, the city council needs and then, you know, issues that are going on there. I do it off of my condolences, I know, you know, I know, you know, City Centralia lost a couple eighteen-year-olds, sorry, uh, one passed away, one's in bad, you know, one's in, you know, bad shape. I came, you know, I, I, I came on that accident, I was just a few minutes behind it, uh, when that happened, that was last week, and, uh, and so, and it's been, you know, a hard time, you know, for the schools and families, so I went off my condolences for that. There was another lady, is that, or another person that passed away, Dale one twenty-four, was that in this area? Sorry, trash truck.
West sixty-three, I think, up towards Hartsburg.
Okay, gotcha, because I saw one twenty, I heard you, you know, one twenty-four, so I know it's a challenging area. Um, my goals as a State Representative as far as my, my, you know, you know, my thoughts and my leadership would be the importance of, of, uh, you know, government that, uh, that, you know, provides basic needs, whether it be, you know, quality roads, uh, you know, quality education, uh, the importance of, uh, you know, military, you know, supporting our police. We know the communities thrive when they, when you, you know, when communities feel safe, and so the importance of supporting our police. Uh, in two, in, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, I sponsored what was called Back the Blue, Back the Flag in the city of Columbia. There, we held it at the, uh, at the courthouse, the importance of supporting our police, supporting our veterans. Very thankful for, uh, the, uh, the work of, you know, the veterans' work here in, in Centralia, you know, the Avenue of Flags. Uh, my dad is, is honored there as well, so think of, you know, think about the Anchor Fest. I'm a member of the Centralia Chamber of Commerce, and so the importance of quality, you know, of safety, uh, quality communities where there's only safety in supporting our police, but also economic growth, and, you know, the importance of, uh, some chance company, uh, our small businesses that are here in Centralia as well. I'm a member of regional economic development, where I personally support, you know, economic growth in this area, in North Boone County, all, you know, all throughout our county, so that's important. Um, so, you know, that, that, that aspect. Uh, I believe government, for example, you know, has its, you know, has its roles, but it should not be too big, uh, so I'm, you know, I believe in limited government, uh, you know, you know, you know, limited taxes. I know Thomas Jefferson said a government that's big enough to give everything you want is also a government big enough to take everything you have. And so I believe in limited government has, has a role, roads and safety, things like that, but I believe in common sense as well, sometimes regulations, sometimes, you know, you know, government programs get so big, and then what's to come after it comes after our taxes, and, and, you know, people like us have to pay extra taxes for maybe government programs that aren't really needed. And so I believe I believe in work for its free enterprise and private, you know, investment, things like that, social responsibility. And so that'd be the, you know, you know, how I would lead as a State Representative. So I just wanted to introduce myself and appreciate your work, I know you guys put in a lot of time, uh, leading, and, uh, that would be my goal as well in Jefferson City, representing, you know, Centralia, Hallsville, Ashland, you know, Hartsburg, uh, East Boone County, uh, you know, you know, to the best of my ability, so I just wanted to, you know, introduce myself, thank you for your time.
Any, any questions from Mr. Martin?
Is this your first time running something like this?
It is my, I ran for State Rep. in District forty-seven, which was west Boone County that I moved, I moved more to Columbia.
What, 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 what's your main reason for wanting to jump in here and do this?
Jump here and do this, um, a stage in my life where I feel like, you know, our country needs good common sense leadership, and so I feel like I'm someone who, I've, you know, I've got, uh, you know, thirty years of experience with ministry and then business work, and so I think our country just needs good common sense leadership, and if, if common sense people don't jump in, there'll be others jump in that they, you know, lead us in the wrong direction, and so, that's a big, big reason I did.
Talk to you in four years and see if you still.
Thank you, sir.
Take you to come back.
I appreciate your time, thank you for giving me that. Any other comments from citizens?
Oh, yeah. Mr. Borman, eight hundred, Jason Cork. Um, recycling, I'm gonna start there and work down my list. Um, do, does the city still pick up cardboard from all the businesses in town? Oh, you don't do that anymore? Okay, because I did, I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that, but that was gonna be part of my solution for our cardboard issues. Um, Danes, I think, takes all of their recycling to Hannibal, and that's why they don't take cardboard or glass, because they have different requirements in Hannibal than what Boone County does. And so that's the difference in that. Now, Harold, do you know, because I honestly haven't paid any attention recently, whether or not Danes actually picks up recycling in our subdivisions every other week?
Well, they've been picking up mine, I put it out every two weeks.
But are they picking it up as a recycling, or are they putting it in the trash?
It goes in a different, it goes in a different truck.
Because I only hear one truck.
I don't see many, excuse me, I don't see many people that put out recycling bags, but I put one out every two weeks or whenever it comes, sometimes every three weeks. Uh, but it, it, usually it is picked up a little bit later than what the regular trash is.
Okay, because I haven't heard a recycling truck come down our street. I used to recycle all the time.
I don't know there's many people down your street.
Well, I was the only one that did for years, for the first two or three years that, you know, and there were times when one truck would go by and all my trash and recycling would be gone, because it's on a Friday morning and that's when they pick up recycling. So I don't know if, you know, like I said, I, I haven't really paid real close attention to it recently.
They come at six in the morning, I don't go up there and sit there and watch them.
Yeah, no, I know.
But I, but I see, I've seen that, I've looked out and the regular trash is gone, and the recycling is still sitting.
Well, that's good then.
And then it leaves later.
Okay, well, that, that's good, because at one time, they put it all in, in the trash, I'm pretty sure, I'm not positive. Okay, the other thing, Donnie, he was talking about delinquent taxes, are we writing off all those taxes tonight with that motion?
No, so let's, let's explain this, that's a county level issue that was actually done back in March, so.
That's why I was wondering.
This is a holdover from when we had a city collector who did all of this work, his or herself.
Oh, I understand.
So candidly, this is more ceremonial than it is effectual, and it was already done by the county back in March, we just didn't have the information to the board until now, so this is more informational slash ceremonial, but there's actually nothing that we can impact in terms of denying the abatements or denying the delinquencies, that's now at the county level.
Okay, all right, that's good. All right, the other thing is, um, I, the, on the minutes or the agenda, there's talk about sidewalks and houses. I was the one that brought that up at planning and zoning last week, so I wanted to explain. Landon, I know you're bored with me.
I'm not, I'm fine.
You're taking a nap.
I understand.
The reason I asked about sidewalks in front of newer homes and in some areas is that over across from the special road district, my daughter lives on the other side of that block, and they've built nine or ten either duplexes or houses in the last, maybe ten years, but most of them have been in the last two years. There's only one or two old houses on that entire block and not a single sub sidewalk was put in. I realize we can't put sidewalks in front of every house when a new house is built, and it depends on what's on that street. If there's a whole bunch of dilapidated houses that are eventually gonna get torn down in a couple of years, then I think, yeah, we need to go ahead and put sidewalks in. You know, and, I mean, there are places, I mean, we know most of the streets in this town are never gonna be curb and gutter in our lifetime, or in a lot of other people's lifetime, but if there's places where we can put in sidewalks, I think we should, because we all know that in those same areas, the roads are so narrow, that you're taking your life in your hand when you're walking. I mean, I, I don't want one sidewalk in, you know, a whole, you know, and just in front of one house if all the other houses are halfway decent, but I just threw that out last week at planning and zoning, thought that's where it really needed to start at, and then saw it on the agenda, so whatever you do with it, you do, but I just think it's something we need to look at in some places in town.
Well, on that, I've had several people complain to me, uh, and I love people being able to walk at night in Centralia, kids playing, but, uh, I've heard very, quite a few, about four or five in the last two weeks, people almost getting hit, because they're having to walk down this, but they're not, they're wearing black, in a black dog. But sidewalks would help, but we can't do everything.
No, I realize that.
We need to promote the safety, you know, because a lot, people, they like to walk in Centralia.
Well, I thought Duke Construction Home, they were supposed to put the sidewalk in.
Uh, with new subdivisions.
Aren't they in new subdivisions?
In ordinance says it's new subdivisions.
Was there existing sidewalks at the President's?
Not that I'm aware of.
No. So it, it is on our ordinance is that if an old sidewalk is torn out, it must be replaced, um, along with ADA guidelines. Like, you can't tear out a super narrow sidewalk and put in a narrow sidewalk back in, it's gotta be up to ADA standards. Um, but if someone rebuilds a home and there's no sidewalk there, there's nothing in our ordinance as a state that they must also put in a sidewalk.
Yeah, and that's because their original land deed would not have the easement requirement for the sidewalk, so the new platted subdivision, it's easier to capture at that point, but that easement goes in at the same time.
But we have a program that landlords can apply to replace.
Oh, I realize that, but in that subdivision, over there, it's not a subdivision, in that area across from the special road district, that's just an old neighborhood, it's north, up on North Columbia and Fulenwilder, and when they started redoing houses, there was no requirement for sidewalks, and so now there's all these new houses and still no sidewalks.
Well, it comes back to what Cindy's saying, it was because you don't have an easement.
Exactly.
That's, I mean, that's.
Well, there should be a certain amount of easement here regardless.
You get, you get easement, and I have to go back and look, because it's changed over the years as things have, you know, machines have gotten bigger, cars have gotten wider, so it used to be fifteen feet off of the center line on either side for both road and if you were putting in sidewalk, and then, as you know, we've gotten bigger, so it's kind of expanded. So it's gonna vary from place to place, and I mean, the only way that you can truly determine where the easement cuts off in some of these older locations where we have houses is to do a full-on title search sometimes and actually look and see where the meets and bounds are and what the actual.
Well, the sidewalk would actually go on city easement.
Yeah, correct, that's.
So that would be behind all the water meters.
Well, no, but that's, but on the older subdivisions though, like, I'm sure older parts of the community, your, your easement would have extended from the center line of the road back in like nineteen forty or fifty, when some of these home additions were built. So it may not be back, it may not, I'm not for sure, Landon, you may be right, but I mean, it would just.
The, the water meters are on personal property, and then behind of that is city easement, or behind the meter to the street, city easement, should be that throughout town everywhere.
Uh, entirely sure.
I was gonna say, that's actually a younger.
Why? Because knowing where mine is, uh, that's not the case, so, but that's probably a lot more deeper than we need to get into this conversation right now, um, but it's something that probably needs to be looked at.
John, your first thing when you get in, help us on these sidewalks. First thing.
Okay, any other comments from citizens?
Perhaps I should ju- ju- jump up, otherwise it's, I, I may be weird or rude, but I'm Dave Raifel.
Please, please come to the microphone, introduce yourself.
My name is Dave Raifel, I, I should announce myself, uh, so it doesn't seem weird or rude. I didn't expect to say anything, I, I, I'm also a candidate for the forty-fourth Missouri House, I ran against Shuri Tolson Rice in the last election, I will file again. Um, I, I have a campaign manager, he might have sent an email asking that I get put on the agenda sometime after the first of the year, but I came by to start listening, someone told me that Shuri was actually fairly responsible in getting by to listen to council meetings on occasion, I don't know if that's true or not, so I came by to listen to what people have to say. Um, very briefly, so you have some idea what I, who, who, more organized than I was last time. Last campaign was more of a protest, uh, symbolic resentment to the politics that Shuri represented. Uh, this time it's a new campaign, I have help. I am a, uh, veteran, a husband, a father, a grandfather, I describe myself as a pro-choice gun, who believes in red flag laws and background checks, and I think I could present an honest alternative to the nonsense that's practiced in Jefferson City. I am happy to come talk more at length, whenever anyone wants to hear, thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no more comments, uh, we'll close comments from citizens and move on to the consent agenda that's in the packet. We take a motion to approve all as a group or separate. Got the Board of Alderman meeting minutes, Public Works and Utility Committee meeting minutes, General Government and Public Safety Committee minutes, P and Z minutes, Collector's Report, Treasurer's Report, and Activity Reports.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda as published.
Is that good? Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as published, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes, thank you. Moving on to number six, accounts payable over one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Page twenty-seven on your packets.
Are we close with Martin's, I thought we were, I thought the Martin contractors were the last time last time, I guess not, huh? Is it just the final payment for those guys?
Yes.
Martin, Martin General Contractors.
You saw it last week, is that what you're thinking of?
I might have, but I, I, I thought we were, this, this should be it, shouldn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we did talk about last week.
Martin, last week, probably.
The top portion, is that right? Need a motion to, uh, accept the accounts payable over one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for one million one hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred and six dollars and forty-four cents.
I know we've paid the accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars in the amount of one million one twenty-eight five oh six and forty-four cents.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the accounts payable over twelve fifty, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to number seven, discussion of the curbside recycling and recycling dumpsters. Assuming this has to do with, uh, Danes' Greek quote and then being able to pick up cardboard at houses versus the dumpster we got.
We want to pick the dumpsters, so, um, what I have in the top graph is what we have spent on the recycling dumpster each month since the beginning of this fiscal year. So, um, just on average for this fiscal year, we're spending almost twenty-six hundred dollars a month on recycling dumpsters. And the current charge for curbside recycling for what we have now, which is the plastics, is a dollar fifty-five per home. And then, um, Danes has quoted us an additional dollar to pick up, uh, any fibers material, so that's gonna be a cardboard box of newspapers, stuff like that. So when you take in what we are spending for the one thousand seven hundred and ninety-six households, we currently have at the dollar fifty-five household, that's twenty, almost twenty-eight hundred dollars. And then you include in the charge for the recycled dumpsters, uh, that gets us up to close to fifty-four hundred dollars a month that we're spending on recycling. Um, if you take out the dumpsters, the, um, and go with the dollar upcharge to do just curbside recycling for the fibers materials and so the dumpsters, that's gonna get us to about forty-six hundred dollars a month.
What about the?
The dollar fifty-five is already in what we're charging, or what people are paying, right?
Correct, so.
So it's only the dollar that's the additional, right?
It's only the dollar that's the additional, um, if you choose to keep the dumpsters, I didn't put that on there, then it would be twenty-five hundred dollars more a month with the dollar fifty-five added, or with the dollar added. So it would go up to.
So the dumpsters, round numbers, twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, curbside, eighteen hundred dollars, so it's actually a little cheaper for the curbside if we only did the curbside versus the dumpsters.
How soon can they start to fibers recycling at curbside?
Um, I would talk to Danes.
What about the glass, the fact that they, if Danes won't take glass?
We would no longer recycle glass.
So everybody in town is getting, every household's getting charged, right?
Yes.
And like her street, you're the only one on your street that uses it, I mean, but that's just part of it, I mean, uh.
Everyone's already paid for the dumpsters to be out there, so it would really be, they're gonna pay, we're paying less as a city, um, and everybody has the option to put the cardboard out.
Instead of driving it across town and getting into a full dumpster, they just put it out in front of their house.
What's those dumpsters worth?
Um, I don't know how much they would be worth to sell them.
How many do we own?
Two.
What'd we get for them?
Um, I believe that they were grants.
No, one was for sure, I, I don't recall on the second.
No one was for sure, yeah.
Yeah. So even if we get minimal money, it's.
Well, I've had several people, they would be in favor of the curbside fibers materials recycling, and they thought it'd be a great idea.
I've had similar conversations, and with all the issues we've had, now we won't have out-of-town people using it, um, which out-of-town people can go over to the handy shop in Mexico and drop off their cardboard, and that's.
Probably just bring it to somebody's house and drop it off the curb.
Please tell about. So, but Landon would be on her street.
I know when I use a dumpster, most of the material that's in there is, um, cardboard for sure and plastics. There's not usually a lot of glass in there, so I don't know, um.
The other problem with dumpsters is if somebody throws in trash in the recycling, they just dump the whole thing.
And they won't break down boxes sometimes, so they've got.
Yeah, yeah.
Take up all space.
I, I think it's the right way to go.
Thank you.
Um, when we think of all the issues, all the complaints, everything that's happened, um, I would say we move to the curbside, scrap the dumpsters, but maybe leave a, a month or two overlap, just to allow people timing.
That's what I was kinda thinking, if we had overlap and just really push the message out so that everybody knows about it, give it a chance to be in, um, our newsletter that we put out, and, um, probably put that one in the newspaper and on social media and on the website, that'll make sure we hit as many people as possible, so that they know.
Yeah, just a short overlap at least, well, it'll pay for the difference over a handful of months, or, or break even.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the curbside recycling?
And that dollar's good for how long?
Um, and so they're contracted with Jefferson City, so if they raise their prices, then that would go up.
So that's in the contract, any, any given time?
Not at any given time, so they will raise their prices every year two and a half percent, and that's what's in the Danes' contract.
Part of it.
Rising costs and all that stuff.
Okay, moving on to number eight, discussion on the dental and vision coverage.
So Marilyn has done, uh, the work on this one, she, um, got a quote in from, our current carrier is going to be an upcharge this year, um, prices increased. Uh, Myrma works with, uh, Sun Life, and they had, um, recently in the last year, offered dental vision and accidental life and dismemberment, and said that if we sent them our information, then they would look at that so that they can match up services, and this is what they sent back. So what we currently, the first column is what we are currently paying for dental and vision benefits for our employees. The second column is what it's going to go up to with United Healthcare for this next year, and if we chose to move over, that's what Sun Life is offering for the next, is it two or three years, Marilyn? Um, it's two years, two years.
So it's like, Sun Life's cheaper, so it's on page seventy-five.
What page are you on?
Seven-five.
It'll look like that if you're scrolling through.
It should've been right after the recycling, I know we're close.
There's your volume. You're close.
You may see in the Sun Life papers are in there, so it takes a little bit of.
So does the city pay part of this, or does the employee just pay it all, or how does it work?
The, the city pays a hundred percent for dental and vision coverage.
Except the spouses, right?
No.
We pay the spouses too?
Yes.
The only ones that pay for their own are the four or five library employees.
Yeah.
So is the coverage equivalent?
The only difference I saw between the two, United Healthcare and Sun Life, was on the, uh, vision, Sun Life paid, uh, for frames, twenty dollars less.
That's minimal in the scheme of things.
We'd also had some, um, employees having trouble with the in-network, with the United Healthcare for dental and vision in this area. So got a list on paper, the Sun Life is more, puts more coverage, and said much more, many more providers, um, in Mexico, Colombia, Moberly, the, the, the in-network.
Seems like it's about the same coverage for a little less money and then.
And we guarantee those rates for two years.
That's the price.
Better deal than I give.
Yeah. Mine goes up every year, so. Okay, any other discussion on the dental and vision coverage? Okay, moving on to number nine, a discussion on the requirement for new construction to require sidewalks. So we had some conversation on this, it sounds like new, um.
So when we have properties that are sold and, um, they tear, like, we have the demolition, um, process here in town where they can apply to have, um, I believe it, it's fifteen hundred dollars agreement to demolish a home, and then if they, um, rebuild, it's another fifteen hundred dollars, um, but again, if it's an old lot with a house that needs to be torn down, there's nothing stating that they have to put a sidewalk in if there's not one there.
That's fairly standard, I mean, just, you know, that's, that's not unusual for communities, I mean, but you would have to have a separate ordinance to require it.
But if there is a sidewalk there, they have to bring it to ADA code?
No, only if they take it out. If they take the sidewalk out, they have to replace it with an ADA.
So if they demolish it and there's an old sidewalk there, what we, what are we saying they have to do? Put a new one in, what if it's, there's bad sidewalks on each side of the?
No, like, if it's, if they don't touch that sidewalk, it stays.
They don't touch it, they don't have to do anything.
Correct.
But they're gonna touch the sidewalk.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's tearing down.
You're not gonna drive a draggo across the sidewalk and not crumple it, I'm sorry.
That's right, that's exactly right.
So, I think you go through the driveway.
If they replace a sidewalk, they have to replace it with an ADA, and that's on existing.
This is a tough one, because there's two trashy, so I've seen this, two trashy sidewalks on each side, and then you have to put one in, really it sticks out like a sore thumb, and then you create another problem, so.
I think we need a different ordinance, if you do that, tear a house and there's a sidewalk there, you need to bring it back to ADA specs.
And from what you said earlier, do you need to also look into, you can necessarily look out?
We will have to, I mean, Landon, to your point, I mean, we can't, you know, as a community, we cannot unjustly take somebody's property, so we'll have to see what existing easements are there in each space. So it's possible that the later, if we have. So it's possible that the landowner, if we have to, but if not, we're gonna have to renegotiate additional easement space, and that means we may have to provide some sort of payment to the landowner if we require that. And that's gonna potentially be on a property-by-property basis.
Well, you would know that going into it, though. I mean, if, that would be a rule, though, it wouldn't be like a shocker to them.
I just wonder how difficult drafting an ordinance would be, we could, we could, something like that.
We can make it a requirement for all new construction, I mean, just, let me just, you know, think it out loud. We can make it a requirement for all new construction, whether it is, you know, subdivision, or if it's a new home on a lot. For old homes that don't have it, you know, the question becomes, again, we are going to, as a community, have to, meaning the city will have to invest to determine where the easement falls for each one of those particular pieces of property. So that's gonna be an additional cost.
What do you mean, from property line to property line?
What, the easement, right, so I'm not for sure, like, some of these older homes, you know, they basically, their property line ran right up to the road, like, the easement for the city and the property line, like, literally meant there really wasn't a space where the property owner would have given an easement right for space for a sidewalk. So in those circumstances, we're gonna have to get the entire easement to cover the distance of the ADA-required sidewalk in that particular case. Um, and you're probably going to need some additional space in between the road and the actual sidewalk, so you're not having people drive on the sidewalk right on top of the road. So we're gonna have to figure out what that is, potentially on property-by-property basis. Now, am I making sense of what I'm saying, you might be a little- I mean, you might make a lawyer talk construction, this is, I know it gets confusing, so.
Well-
At a high level, it seems a concern, though, with, uh, some of the properties, that would be very hard, and really cut into people's space, uh, just the way houses, well, houses aren't a lot, so.
So we have some houses that are built pretty close to the, to the road.
Yeah. And if they, if we had, you know, think of the grass in and then the sidewalk, and many cases, that would be pretty darn tight, so. I don't know, I, I agree with you to some aspects, Landon, but I'm a little concerned about just the way some of the communities have been built up.
I don't think any of the easements on our streets is thirty feet, I think some of them are, most of them are more.
No, they're not in my house.
Well, yeah, yours, yours would be more, yours is new subdivision.
No, I'm not talking about the new subdivisions, I'm talking about the older ones.
So new subdivisions, it sounds like it's already in place, it's supposed to be built. The question is, do we do something, call them rebuilds, just to call a different, a different term right now for this conversation, rebuilding. I think we, we could run into issues if someone says, well, no, I'm not gonna give up that land, 'cause it's an issue, and then you got people on both sides building sidewalks, somebody in the middle, no, they would have that right.
Yeah, if there's no easement there, correct.
I think we need to-
But there's other ways to go around that, too.
Yeah, but, and then I think we gotta make sure we're doing it right. And there's a lot of places in here, it would be hard to back off, you know, thirty, the thirty feet, have that, all that easement in place and everything, without severely cutting into people's yards. And maybe even putting sidewalks that are like a couple feet away from their front door. I'm not sure this is a black and white one. Do we know what anyone else does in the, the rebuild-type scenarios, do people have this, or is, is it generally kinda like what we've got?
Most of my community, I've never had another community that I've represented ever address this question, so I'm sorry, I'm not, I mean, this one may be a good one for the clerks, let's serve, I mean, one city that comes to mind, I know the city of Herman, Missouri, did do some very major upgrades to their sidewalk system, including in the older part of Herman, but I only know that from driving through it, I had no idea how they addressed it, and I know they had some narrow cobblestone streets that they still maintain, that may be a community, you guys could ask and see how they did that, but I've just never had another, I'm sorry, another community address this like you guys are, so I don't know.
I think most of Herman is curb and gutter, where we don't have curb and gutter.
Sounds like we need a little research, maybe, kinda get an idea if others' communities are addressing this or not. Any other discussion on this? Okay, moving on to the action agenda, number ten, finance, the first one, A, is the surplus equipment. That is page seventy-six in the packet, we've got, uh, the rescue combi tool that was replaced. Um, so we've gotten some new equipment, and then the, uh, snow plow, uh, that was removed from the mini dump trucks, we upgraded their equipment. We need a motion to, uh-
Did we declare the surplus dead, Landon? Are we selling it?
Mm-hmm.
We are. Would it bring the work more money selling it all together, than selling the blade and the truck separate?
I don't know, I could ask Matthew if he wanted.
I make a motion, we put two items for sale.
Second.
Do you want any discussion about what Landon said, does that change this? Do we go and declare the surplus?
We could hold off, like, if I ask Matthew and he says, oh, yeah, it would, then we could hold off putting the, the plow on there, and then when we get to the point where we can do, sell the, the mini dump truck, the lenders did them both together.
Okay, so we'll declare, we're, we're gonna go ahead and vote on declaring them both as surplus, but we may not sell one of them, pending feedback.
Is that the motion?
It'd be, it'd be a good thing.
Paraphrasing you.
Is that the motion?
I make a motion.
What he said, read it.
Okay, you add a discussion, all right, I make a motion, we put the two items on, forbid for auction.
That's different than we just talked about, 'cause that would be saying we're gonna put both up for auction right away, so I just wanna be clear.
I don't think it's gonna make a big difference to the cost of, in which hand you truck.
Let's declare a surplus.
Vote us.
We can declare it surplus and sell it three months from now, I think, so, I think, I think it's fine.
Okay. So we have a motion and second to declare this surplus, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to the, uh, approving budget interfund transfers, we did this, uh, annually.
Mm-hmm.
This is part of the normals, moving twenty thousand dollars from the electric to the cemetery, fifty thousand dollars from the water to the general, and two hundred thousand from the electric to the general fund, we made a motion.
So much.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to approve the budgeting interfund transfers, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moves us to number C, motion for the delinquent tax report. As was stated earlier, this is following up with what the county has already done.
This is a motion just to accept the report, to me.
Yeah, you're just accepting our full, some, yeah.
Can you promote, we accept the, uh, delinquent tax report from the county.
Got a motion and a second to accept the delinquent tax reports from the county, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we get the report on the county tax abatements. Same scenario, but it's, we are acknowledging the report or accepting the report. So we need a motion to accept this. Have a motion and a second to accept the report on the county tax abatements, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moves us to purchasing.
So this is about the discussion that we had earlier in the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
So you move forward with those.
So as we had discussed, we were talking about approving, moving forward with the curbside pickup for the fibrous material, holding the dumpsters for a period of time, based on allowing proper communication and people to learn the difference, and then stopping the dumpsters. We need a motion for that.
So, second.
We have a motion and a second in regards to the conversation on the curbside recycling, recycling dumpsters, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the, moving on to the motion for the employee dental and vision plan going to Sun Life versus the existing plan. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the change to Sun Life, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moves us on to old business, any old business. Moving on to new business, mayor not being here, and I don't have anything in his stead, so we'll move past the mayor. Um, city administrator packets, or the notes are in the packet, anything else?
Yeah, they're all in the packet, um, not really, just, there was a lot of meetings last month. A lot. But we got a lot then. We wrapped up all three of the, the RFPs that we had out, we're working with the, the new IT company. We're still waiting on rugs from Centos to be delivered, they're supposed to be here by December the first. Um, and then Dane's is continuing on normal business there. Um, I did start, and actually have finished up this month, a three-part, um, budgeting program through ICMA.
I was gonna ask you when that wrapped up, it's all in.
Mm-hmm, it was about municipal budgeting, you know, it was very informative, and I've got a nice little book that I can refer back to when I'm going through the budget this year, I think that's gonna be helpful.
Any questions for city administrator? City attorney?
We have one piece of litigation that is going to conclude, hopefully with the mayor's signature by tomorrow, so that information will be made available to you, but that will be concluded, Matt will be working with, is it, uh, Villadine or One, to get the slaker removed now, within the next thirty days, but before the end of the year, so that is part of it. So they will be in there, determining the old slaker, hopefully before the end of the year, but that will be concluded. We've been working on another piece of litigation that was filed, associated with the street creep issue, and Tara and Matt have also worked to retain the city, or engineer, to take a look at the street creep issue, and I believe that the city is starting progress on that, and we will, we will provide all of that information to the outside council that is working on the street creep issue to recover it. Landon, you look, like you got some, no, we, just, you can ask what the-
Well, I could, what's a street creep issue, what is it?
So we, we have an issue over, in one of the new developments, that when it was built out, you know, and I'm not an expert on this, I don't wanna uphine to be, but there was a construction issue of some sort that has caused one of the streets in front of one of the homeowners to basically-
Gobbers, no, I don't wanna talk about that.
Yeah, so, to basically create some water issues and other damage to this particular individual's property. Well, he filed a claim with our insurance carrier, Myrma, that was then paid out, and as a result, we filed a claim through outside council, Myrma did an order of cost recovery associated with that street creep issue. But with the street creep issue, it's not going to just be one house, it's basically a construction issue that will affect that entire area where that road was built and developed. So this is in an effort to, one, remediate, so we don't have future damages where folks will be filing claims, and number two, it will hopefully then help us to capture the entire damages amount, so the current piece of litigation that is filed will have an idea of what the total damages are that we're pursuing in that litigation, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Um, the ultimate goal is, obviously, we just, we want the road fixed so that no other property owners impacted it.
Absolutely.
And then finally, um, Tara knows this, I will be out of the country starting, um, November the twenty-seventh through roughly December the seventh. So, um, and then I will be in Washington DC December, what'd I say, the twenty-first? No, wait, wait.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, say the twenty-first, my, my calendar's gotten a little off. So there will be a couple of days and times that I will be out in the month of December, so Tara knows those, I provided those dates to her and to the mayor. But when I'm out of the country, I, hopefully there's no emergency, but, anyway. That's my update.
Okay.
And also, don't forget, 'cause we both have our, our folks who state, you know, is starting to look at bills and pre-bill filing, we will see exactly what some of the pre-bill filing is, hopefully next week, roughly, we should start seeing some early bills. Um, again, Missouri Municipal League is anticipating some fairly intense filing around municipal entities and municipal interests. One of the things that I was actually just recently discussing, and I would like to start, you know, picking, you know, communities' brains, one of the biggest struggles for small communities is the ability to recover costs when we tear down dangerous buildings. So we have a lot of dangerous buildings that we've tried to abate to clean up our communities. Oftentimes, cities get stuck with footing the bills, the taxpayer gets stuck footing the bills for a private property owner who was not diligent in maintaining their property, and then the city ultimately has to tear it down because it might be considered their declared danger. There are very limited resources for communities to then be able to recover costs when we bear the cost of tearing down and abating that building. That is a bill that, you know, I know has interested several small communities, we're hoping that Missouri Municipal League can put something together to give us maybe at least one, possibly two more options to try to cost recover. Um, it hasn't been done, you know, recently, so usually the first bite at the apple will not be successful, but hopefully with a few pushes, tweaks, moving forward the next couple of years, we'll see something, maybe give us another tool, or a tool, tool belt to recover those costs if and when we have to tear down a dangerous building because that's where we're at, so.
We're all aware of those conversations.
Yeah, anyway, so, that is it.
Okay. City clerk?
I'm gearing up for what will be a very busy December, for city clerk. Um, candidate filings, um, have been, put in the, app in the paper, so candidate, we have, um, Alderman one-two, the one from each report, um, up for, on the ballot. Uh, so candidate filings will be from December, starting December the fifth, and will end on December the twenty-sixth. We previously passed an ordinance to shorten that to December the twenty-second. Our state did not comply with that, so.
That was for in-person filing, but they could still mail them and have them postmarked by the twenty-sixth.
And then subsequently, the attorney general, after he passed this, came out with an advisory opinion guiding that we have to physically be open on the twenty-sixth, at least a period of time. So we will have to have an in-person person here at least some portion of the twenty-sixth to accept in-person candidate filing. So that opinion came out after we had passed the ordinance, and since I told you that cities were struggling to figure out exactly what we were going to do with this, that provided clear guidance that we had to have, and I've sent that and communicated that to Tara and the mayor. We do have to have somebody physically here on the twenty-sixth for at least a period of time up to five o'clock. So in other words, if Marilyn is here, she has to at least be here, tell that candidate file when closes at five.
So somebody could be here, one to five.
Yep. It could be a half a day.
But you got that to say, that's gonna be, and I think we're gonna put the dispatch phone number on the front door for whatever portion of the day that we're closed, so if they show up at a certain time, then Marilyn can be on call instead of sitting up here. 'Cause no other city business will be done on that day, other than candidate filing.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Um, also in December is health insurance, all the open enrollment, so we'll be doing, working with staff to get all those updates, um, from the staff and implement it into our system. Um, Myrma health insurance rates will be increasing one point nine percent. So we have a lot, but a little bit. We have the wellness screening scheduled for December the fifth for our staff, we've talked, we've approved that, we appreciate that. Be a little shorthanded for the next couple of months with, with city hall, but with one attorney, I believe.
The manager, having a baby next to him.
That's all I know. We'll work on that. City employee and families, Christmas party's scheduled for December the twenty-ninth, so we'll get you some information sent out on that.
Somebody.
Okay. Okay, still both, uh, points on here for the closed session?
Yes.
Need somebody to make a motion and make us into closed session, please?
I make a motion that we go into, enter the closed session. During the meeting, the board of aldermen may want to go into closed session. Before a closed vote, the purpose of this closed session, the closed vote shall be, one, as provided for under section six-ten, point zero-one-two, one of the revised statutes of reserve for legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body, and any confidential or privileged communication between the government, public, governmental body, or its representatives and its attorneys. Or two, as provided for under section six-ten, point zero-one-two, point zero-two-one, excuse me, three, the revised statutes of reserve for hiring, firing, disbanding, or promoting a particular employee by a public governmental body.
Second.
So we got a motion and a second to go into closed session, roll call vote, please?
Alderman Cox.
Four.
Alderman Hudson.
Four.
Alderman Welkens.
Four.
Alderman Deckard.
Four.
Alderman Rogers.
Four.
Alderman Bentley.
Bill.
Motion carries, and we are going into closed session. We're returning from closed- We're a return from closed session, all we vote taken in closed session was to return back from closed session, where we had discussed legal issues as well as, uh, personnel issues. Any as may arise?
Um, I have one, did you guys get the email from the county government about the, um, government dinner?
The one in Hallsborough?
That's the same night as, is it the road, what was that, I can't remember.
The Agnes, for instance, I'm...
Is it a Rotary or Juana's dinner?
Oh, the, um, seventy-fifth anniversary of the Central Juana's Club.
Yeah.
Same night, it's November thirtieth?
Yeah. The same night.
That's gonna be a problem.
I, I didn't know if anyone was planning on going or not to that, and I don't know if you guys...
Wow.
Okay.
Any other as may arise?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second? We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.